Because I apologize, I'll take full responsibility. Meetings went a little long upstairs, so good discussions. All these good talks to make sure we do things right for the village. So we will get started and call this meeting to order. And we will start with a pledge of allegiance. And I will be ready by stand, I'll be ready by, led by President Robert Dixon.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Robert. We will do roll call, please.
Kokovich.
Here.
Dixon.
Here.
Byer.
Here.
Kerrigan.
Here.
Steve, here. Byer.
All right, looks like we have everybody here, but Mr. Byer. If we would, I think it would be appropriate if we would take a few moments of silence in remembrance of September 11th, 2001, and the terror attacks on this country. I know there was a lot on the news about it today, so let's just take a couple moments. Appreciate everybody taking that moment. Approval of the minutes from August 14th, 2017.
I approve the minutes as distributed and dispense with the readings.
All right, we have a move, do we have a second?
Seconded.
All right, so we have a move by Dixon, and a second by Steve that we approve them. Minutes as distributed and dispensed with the reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, looks like the motion passed. Visitors, do we have any visitors in the audience that would like to address council tonight? All right, thank you. We do have a, we do want to recognize a guest that we have here tonight as our council, and that is Colt Emerson. And Colt was a part of the U-12 World Baseball Champions that played in Taiwan. And it's a really nice article featured in the Jeffersonian. That was back on, the article was written for Sunday paper in August 13. So Colt, let's see, I read all these stats, it's pretty cool. I might ask him if he wanted to get up here, but it consists of a 12 players all across the country. You were the only one from Ohio to participate, right?
Yeah.
And got, when it went into the first rounds, you got knocked out by the Chinese team, but come around and had to play them in the finals. And it was quite an impressive win. What was that score, the final game?
It was seven to two.
Seven to two, pretty impressive win. So I know Colt's dad here, Jamie, many of us remember him as a John Glenn student, and played football for us, right?
Baseball, baseball.
Yeah, there you go. Hey, you got it from somewhere, right?
That wasn't me.
Oh, okay, all right. So Colt, would you like to say any words to council or to the TV cameras?
Thank you for having me. I really enjoyed it.
All right, well, it's our honor to have you here as our guest, and a pretty cool accomplishment. I know it's something that, I'll speak for myself, I know I had no talents that could go that far, so it's pretty cool to see it. And in the article, it talks about that your future plans would be to be a major league player.
For the Indians?
No.
I think he's got the Yankees down there, it says green. But we want to extend a welcome back as you progress through your baseball career. You're always welcome back, and then always remember us. I know your mom and dad's going to remember, so if you are a major leaguer someday, remember your hometown roots and come back and see us in New Concord. But I think we ought to give this gentleman a round of applause. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And you're welcome to stay and participate in, or listen in, so, or free to, or free to go home and watch TV. The reports, so we'll start with zoning officer, Brent.
No permits were issued. Just, we had just other regular improvements throughout the village that required no permits. And all complaints we had about high grass were taken care of. The last one at 865 Friendship Drive, got a contact, and they mowed a third of it, and I called the guy, it's the bank I finally found him. For the first time in five years, the ball hit a guy that lived next door, didn't have to mow.
Okay, yeah, that's a good thing.
Congratulations.
So yes, I told him I was going to mow, yeah, I was going to tell him I was going to mow Thursday, and they were there Wednesday.
Okay.
So it was all taken care of, so. That's the first time, I think, that we can actually say, even though it's September, there's no, even those few problems we were promised by the same gentleman being Charlotte, they still didn't hang, and promised by a guy to clean up a lot, and another lot is supposed to be cleaned up in the same alley, too. Neither one of them are done yet, but we'll keep working on it. Other than that, we're caught up on everything.
Okay, all right, thank you. Police chief, Chief Tucker. Your first, your first report is as chief of New Concord.
Yes, sir.
Front sentence.
Okay, for the month of August, the statistics for calls for service, the total we had was 216. As for the year so far, it's 1,765, average about seven calls per day. We had 33 traffic citations, 81 traffic warnings, two misdemeanor arrests, zero felony arrests, zero warrant arrests. The total for this year so far, citations issued 191, and the warnings totaled about 267. When we break it down for the traffic, the speed, we had 14 speeding tickets, two driving under suspensions, three traffic control devices, five expired registrations, two OVIs, zero marked lane violations, and seven other. Total for 33, zero parking citations. For criminal, we had zero noise, zero trash, zero disorderly conducts, and zero underage consumptions. Drunk paraphernalia abuse, we had two, zero assaults, zero thefts, and total for two. Let's see, traffic crashes, we had six for the month, zero private property, three noise calls, one trash report, zero thefts, and the only usual aid we had was other. So, and I'd like to say that Rich Seelock has completed his field training, and he is finally out on his own. Hayden Wopple is almost done, we're thinking maybe about in the next two weeks, he'll be ready to be out on his own. And we should be back to 24-hour coverage once they're both finished and we get everybody where they need to be.
All right, any questions for the chief?
I have a question, yeah, just a very minor question, chief. On parking citations, do we cite, if somebody's parking in an area where it's marked with the yellow line, is that considered a citable?
Yep, if they're parked there, like, my, the one I very familiar with, it's right there on Montgomery, Coman and Montgomery, right there on the end, how it's parked, yeah, if they're parked there, they receive a site.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, chief. Fire chief, Chief Gates.
Yep, month of August, we did 20 fire calls for the month. Nothing that, that really, you know, just normal type runs, a lot of false alarms, canceled most of our automatic aid, of course, it's set automatically, and non-fire runs, we've already covered four football games already for EMS. We had a couple events that will be covered for the university, we have a play going on, have to turn a fire alarm off in a building to use a smoking machine, so we have a firefighter on site there. Did some things out there at NFI, they're repairing from their damage, trying to get it done, so trying to work through that. And we've started a new EMS software, it's EMS side, we did 86 runs with 47 transports, so 40 non-bills, but we started a new EMS software, which I mentioned, last saved conservative mounting. We're combining our fire and EMS run mainly for the way they, the grants are being done, and how we operate as a fire department, it's to our advantage to have our numbers combined. So how we report and everything will be changed in a little bit. Because like right now, I wrote a fire report today, and it's 888. And the next EMS run will be, they just took an EMS run about a half hour ago, it's 889. Instead of having the things separate, we're combining for grants and stuff, is, we should have did it last year, but we did it this year. It's this way they're looking at grants, they started looking at them last year, that our numbers there need to be combined, so. So as we do these, these reports eventually, as we get used to our new software, and we start doing the fire reports in the same software, our reporting will be a little bit different, because we learn more and more about what we've got as we take more and more training on it.
Thank you, chief. Any questions for Chief Gates? All right, thanks again, chief. Mayor, my correspondence, I would like to put out there, if I could, ask everyone to consider an executive session to be added to the agenda tonight for the consideration of purchase of property for public purposes. So I know that's kind of a, we've not had an opportunity to talk about any of this yet, thought it's just come up, if that would be all right, to put that on. Do I need a motion on that, or is it just put it on the docket?
To add it to the agenda, okay.
I make a motion. I make a motion, we add it to the agenda for tonight.
All right, do we have a second on this?
Second.
So we have a motion by Dixon, and a second by Kokovich, to add the executive session at the end of council here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, passes, thank you. Other than that, I'm trying to think of all the activities I've participated in the last year. So a couple weeks ago on a Friday, maybe three weeks ago now, participated with Muskegon University and Louvende, welcomed the freshman class and the parents into the university and into the village. Just tried to, you know, just a very quick welcome speech, invite students downtown to be a part of the community, get involved, volunteering with the fire department or the village mechanisms with inside government. Did receive a couple emails, so that's good. Appreciate the conversations there. The, I'll get this name wrong, but we have the Muskegon University and Community Task Force that has been working over the summer, working in conjunction with the nuisance party ordinance that we passed in late, early summer, early summer, and getting student awareness of what's coming forth with that. So we, on a Thursday night, there was a little bit of a community party gathering, ice cream social for the residents of Montgomery Thompson and students, and then we had a town hall meeting. Wow, my memory slips. The following Thursday, yes. Both, both events, I thought, went well. Always could look for more participation, I believe, from the student body, I would encourage that. But I thought the dialogue that was there opened up some good, good discussions and set some, you know, always looking to correct any rumors that are out there to the truth, to what this ordinance was, pertains to, and how it will be enforced, and the, always the story behind it, and not what somebody thinks they heard or interpreted it. So I think we're off to a good start with that dialogue and communication with that group, hope it stays, you know, our goal is keep it active and keep that dialogue going. You may want to add that it was there, anybody think it was well viewed from here, or, you know, represented, so.
Well, and that there will be another session targeted toward residents to talk about the nuisance party ordinance, correct?
Yeah, it's going to be a community town hall, and we'll have it on October 11th at 6:00 PM, correct? It won't just be to talk about the nuisance party ordinance. Chief Peck wants to introduce herself to the community, talk a little bit about her policing philosophy as well, get some input from the residents on what they're seeing in terms of need for the community and policing and things like that. If I miss something, let me know.
The attendant date for that's October 5th, right?
11.
11.
11, at 6:00 PM at the College Drive Presbyterian Church. They've offered to let us use their space.
So please watch our village website, you'll see more to come on that, but yeah, Jennifer, that one, that town hall meeting revolves more around when Chief Peck interviewed with WHIZ, you know, she shared that she would like to have a town hall meeting to, just to have open dialogue with the residents on policing concerns, needs, her viewpoints, other, all those encompass. So we wanted to make sure we followed up on that and got it out there. So I'm sure we'll be talking about the noise, or the nuisance party ordinance, but a lot of it, too, is just from all residents of the village overall. Any general policing concerns that you might have will come there, you know, looking for it to be more a good brainstorming exercise. I'll challenge everybody when they come, as I do in my day job with work, if you have a problem, bring a solution. And I think that always works better if we can dialogue it that way, so. So more to come on that, we'll keep everybody updated, and I'm ready, I'm ready for, I'll turn everything right over to the chief. I'll be there for your backup, behind you every step of the way. The, I think I covered the majority of the mayor correspondence that I can, that I can recall, I'm sure I'll forget something by the end. So fiscal officer Lynn will turn that over to you.
Thank you, ma'am. The fund report balance at the end of August was $673,838. August revenue summary, we received our second half 2016 real estate taxes from the county auditor's office, and $53,000 of that, $158,000 that we received is held in reserve for the Garland TIP fund. And all of our August expenditures, routine and budgeted, and in the expenses, our personnel looks high, but that's just due to August being a free pay month. That's all I have to report.
Okay, any questions for Lynn? All right, if not, thank you. Administrator, Charlotte.
For the month of August, our water and wastewater treatment plants, we had water production of 8,163,000 gallons. Our wastewater flows were 6,528,000 gallons. You'll notice, if you've been paying attention, the previous months, that number's usually flipped, or more close to even. Usually our wastewater flows are higher than our production, because we do have some significant INI issues in some of our areas, mainly one of our contracted subdivisions outside of the village where we take sewer flow from. This was a dry month, we do have water loss. As we've been talking with the groundwater storage tank project, we have been running water to help with the pressure issues, and also help with some of our residents who are experiencing some pretty severe, at times, vibrations in their homes because of their water pipes vibrating caused by the pressure buildup in the lines on this side of town. So we've been advising them to run their water, to release some of that pressure to help with those vibrations. With the university and the school district back in session, it seems to have helped some. We're not experiencing so many calls of people having these issues. We know they're still out there, so we are still encouraging people, if you're experiencing any sort of unusualness with your water, it's cloudy, pressure is not right, you're seeing vibrations, anything that you wouldn't normally expect, please give us a call so we can help to address it and let our engineers know what's going on. As far as our operations manager and our plant superintendent, they're working together with their staff to help test and monitor our water system to make sure that it's functioning as well as possible during this transition period. Our costs for plant utilities and chemicals have increased due to the project because our treatment plant is running approximately 20 hours a day. That's not normal for us, we usually don't run that long. So we will see a spike in some of our costs associated with specifically the water plant. Operations department, again, they're working closely with their water department to help facilitate this project. They're also working with our engineering group and the contractors to make sure that everything runs smoothly. Currently, they are searching for a slow leak, which is getting bigger day by day, so we're trying to find that so we don't have the large water loss that we're experiencing. If we can locate it, it'll also help the project move a little faster, because we won't have such unstable ground for the large equipment to go on to get up the hill to the tank site. As far as the project goes, the water line is almost complete. We have a few little things to finish, but Zumba Brothers have done a fantastic job working with us and getting things done as quickly as possible. The actual tank is still being constructed. We will be laying down the concrete pad, letting it cure, bringing in the tank, and building it piece by piece from the roof and up. So we'll build the roof and the first ring, and then jack it up and go that way. As soon as we get to that point, we'll have a large construction meeting, and I'll have more specific dates for everyone, and we'll have a better idea of when the project will be complete. Our 2017 street improvement project bids were open on August 25th, and they will be presented to council this evening for review and approval if, for the selection of the lowest and best bidder. Once we know which bidder that is, I will contact them. We anticipate that this job will get started, hopefully sometime during the week of September 25th. And we'll post the streets where we anticipate doing the work on the website and on our social media, so everyone's aware and has a heads up. Our food truck zoning code amendment, I believe Policy might talked about that a little bit, but Planning Commission met on August 9th and August 24th to review the zoning code amendment, and has voted to recommend this to council for approval, so I'll let Bill give a little more specifics on it, but that's all I have right now.
All right, thanks, Charlotte. Any questions for Charlotte? So you will keep us updated on that water. I'd like, I'd like to see that tower, or the.
Yeah, I would, too. I want to have some sort of a time-lapse camera, I think it'd be really interesting to watch it go up, so we're working with the engineering group to try and figure out how best to do that.
Okay.
And what about this slow leak? I'm a little concerned about that, since, how long is that going to go on?
We're not 100% sure how long it's been going on, but it's, it's been going on at least since before the project started. We think it's getting a little bit worse, we're experiencing more water loss than we were before. So our operations crew has been tracing the line, trying to find where it's coming from. A lot of times water leaks, you, the water will be here, but the leak will be over here. So trying to find it is the issue, but they're working as, as fast as they can to locate it.
But it's not related to the new construction, it's related to the old tank?
It's old infrastructure.
Okay, correct.
All right, well, thank you. So we'll move on to finance, Steve.
Finance committee was not able to meet, and we have two routine issues to have council rule on. One is ordinance E-9171, and then another, second is ordinance E-9172, and they're both related, and while all of us would be, are heavily in debt to Chief Dawson for being our interim police chief, E-9171 reduces his pay somewhat, because, and E-9172 creates a, I don't know if the position existed, but we've created a police sergeant position, which is in fact a promotion for him, and that's what those two ordinance do. So I would enthusiastically hope that council would vote in the affirmative on those two.
All right, thank you. Yeah, and the sergeant position has been on, been on the books, it's been located.
So it's there, but he does in fact have a promotion.
Correct, correct.
And I want publicly for everyone to know how much we appreciate it, the work he has done.
Absolutely.
And speak for all of us.
All right, any questions for finance on those items? Charlotte touched base on the street improvements. Safety committee.
Safety committee did not meet.
Okay, all right, thank you, Jennifer. Infrastructure committee, Robert.
Thank you, Brett. Yeah, we met tonight and had several lengthy conversations, of which actually had several tabled and no solution to a few. What we did agree on was on to move forward with the street improvement project. Bids were received, open, and we felt the lowest and best was Parnell and Associates, so we've given Charlotte the go-ahead to go with Parnell and Associates to complete our this year's street improvement project. Other than that, we have, I'm sorry?
Did we agree to loan on the municipal right-of-way? I thought we did.
Yes, I thought we did.
Okay, so that was, that was not tabled.
Correct, it wasn't.
But it wasn't under my report, because I wasn't here.
Yeah, I was going, we're going to jump in and help Robert out on that.
Yeah, because I wasn't part of that discussion. So other than that, as far as my part.
Okay.
That was all we had for infrastructure, but if you can discuss the municipal right-of-way program.
Yeah, so that, so that program, we discussed it jointly between infrastructure and finance, because it kind of takes, encompasses both, and I may just turn it to the administrator, let you word it this, or do you want me to take a crack at it?
I can do it.
All right.
The municipal right-of-way program is a program created by state law that allows municipalities to charge fees, basically reimbursement for costs that they've incurred to maintain municipal right-of-ways where public utilities have either underground or overhead infrastructure. It, the, the cost that we would be recouping would be our maintenance costs for the previous year, we would bill the utilities in the following year, and then receive those payments from those utility companies to help offset our maintenance costs from the previous year. So I know, I feel like that was redundant, but hopefully I said it correctly. After some, some really good discussion with Eric Sandin from GGC Engineers, who has put in place, I believe, eight or nine of these programs throughout Ohio in small communities and villages, he, he was able to articulate well enough what the issues were, so Resolution 9173 allows us to contract with GGC Engineers to get the process started and to immediately notify the PUCO of our intent to put this program in place. So I believe that the group said that they wanted to move forward with that resolution.
Correct, correct. So that, that was kind of the consensus with the combined group of infrastructure, Robert had a prior commitment and missed that piece of it, but the infrastructure and the finance thought after discussion that it would be favorable to go ahead and contract with GGC Engineers to start this process. So ultimately, yeah, Charlotte, you paraphrased it well, is that, you know, there's a lot of times that our staff are marking water lines and, and utilities that we can. of times that our staff are marking water lines and utilities that we can charge that cost back and time that we spend, equipment we use, and bill that back to the appropriate utilities companies out there in maintaining right-of-ways. So there is an upfront cost to get it started, but then the billing should more than reimburse that and be a positive for the village. And it seems like what feedback we got from other villages that have participated in it's been favorable. So with that answered, Eric helps answer, frame the question.
Are you doing, how many readings are you doing on that?
So tonight on Resolution 9173 is just a resolution that will be on an emergency to enter into the contract. So part of the contract with GGC Engineers will be proposed legislation coming forward that we will vote on in October, November, and December, do a three reading to pass that. So it will be in place this year. Correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So this is just the first piece. Tonight is just strictly authorizing village administrator to enter into the contract. They'll start doing their work, provide us the documentation and legislation that we will bring forth to council and give the public the opportunity to see that on the website, come to any meetings, and it will be on a three read and still get us right on the cuffs of this year's.
So that would permit us to recover fees incurred in 2016, excuse me, this is 2017.
Yeah, 2017.
That would permit us to recover fees incurred in 2017.
Correct.
And we would receive those fees in 2018.
Yeah.
Hopefully, if it all goes through.
Yeah, it gives us a little bit faster way to recoup that out-of-pocket monies instead of waiting till 18 and then wouldn't recoup those monies till end of 19. Yeah. Is that, for everybody that was there today, does that wrap up the majority of it?
Well, we have something. We have a resolution which we've decided to table. We should mention that.
Okay. So the...
9172?
Yeah, okay. So...
We decided not to move forward with that one at this time.
Well, that's a resolution to enter into a contract for construction of the sidewalk on North Liberty.
Right.
And the committee decided to table it for this time.
Right. Great. Thank you, Bill. Anything else out of that joint committee meeting? If not, we will move on. Policy committee, Bill.
Okay, Policy. Please jump in and correct me if I get this wrong, Charlotte. We looked at, reviewed, and approved a bond schedule, adjustments to our bond schedule to incorporate the new nuisance party ordinance. And so we're voting to make those changes tonight, which gives the police the authority to assess appropriate fines when necessary under that ordinance. We also discussed the amendments to our zoning code that would potentially permit food trucks and allow the current food truck that's there on a conditional lease to submit a plan that would then be approved, have to be reviewed by the appropriate committees, planning commission, and design review. So this is kind of an ordinance that allows that process to go forward. It's not an ordinance that specifically approves the current state or any plan. It's just about making it possible within our legal structure to have food trucks and allow a food truck then to apply with a plan to planning commission and design review for potential approval.
Correct. And this will have three readings.
So this will have three readings. Good. Okay. So this is the first reading on that. And then we discussed communicating, how to communicate with nuisance party ordinance. I thought we had a great conversation about that. And I think the follow-up in the town hall meeting that the mayor mentioned was great. Our new police chief did a great job. Our mayor did a great job. Task force people did a great job. It was a good event, so.
We do have the zoning code amendment on the website as well as the new authority ordinance communication on our website, if anybody's interested in taking a look at those two documents.
I think that's it for Policy.
All right.
Yeah, okay.
Any questions for Bill? Thank you, Bill. So old business. So we have, we'll move into that. So ordinance I-9-17-1 and ordinance to amend ordinance I-12-15-1 regarding the municipal tax code to comply with House Bill 49 regarding withholding tax, and this is a final reading.
I'll move.
So we have a move.
Second.
Move by Kokavich, second by Lyle on the final reading. Roll call, please.
Kokavich?
Yeah.
Lyle?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Carrigan?
Yes.
Stevic?
Yes.
All right, and that passes final reading. So tying to that also is ordinance I-9-17-1.
That actually should be two, ma'am.
Oh, two. Okay, yes. Sorry. Make it a two. An ordinance to amend ordinance I-12-15-2 on that side also.
So move.
Hold on a second. I appreciate the enthusiasm here, but this is, regarding the municipal tax code to comply with House Bill 49 regarding withhold tax and a final reading. That is a part two of that, or did that just get duplicated?
There were two parts.
Okay. All right. I thought there's two parts. I'm making sure I'm moving my brain. So we do have, do we have a move on this piece of it on final reading? And I believe Jennifer did move it.
I moved it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. So move by Lyle, second by Stevic. Roll call, please.
Lyle?
Yes.
Stevic?
Yes.
Kokavich?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Carrigan?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That passed. Now we'll move into new business. See if I can get this one smoother than the old business. Ordinance C-9-17-1, ordinance to approve, adopt, and enact bond amounts for nuisance party citations, amend ordinance C-2-17-1 in order to update the bond sheet and declare an emergency. Do we have a move on the emergency?
So moved on the emergency.
Second.
All right. Move by Carrigan, second by Lyle on the emergency. Roll call.
Carrigan?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
Kokavich?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Stevic?
Yes.
Kokavich?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
Carrigan?
Yes.
And now the ordinance?
I move that we go to the ordinance.
That's second.
All right. Move by Stevic, second by Dixon. Roll call on the ordinance.
Stevic?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Kokavich?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
Carrigan?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance passes. Thank you. Now an ordinance E-9-17-2, ordinance amending ordinance E-8-17-1 to establish salary ranges and wages for employees and officers of the village for the period 7/116 to 3/3118 and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Move, do we have a second?
Second.
So move by Kokavich, second by Lyle on the emergency. Roll call, please.
Kokavich?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Carrigan?
Yes.
Stevic?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Ordinance K-11-17-1 and ordinance amending ordinance K-5-94-2, known as the zoning ordinance of the village in New Concord. First reading, this is the first reading as Bill discussed in the policy committee, the opportunity for a food truck facility. Court, yes. So do we have a move on the first reading?
So moved.
Moved?
Seconded.
Second. So we have a move by Carrigan, second by Stevic. Roll call on the first reading.
Carrigan?
Yes.
Stevic?
Yes.
Kokavich?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
Carrigan?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. First reading passes. Resolution 9-17-1, resolution to accept the lowest and best bid and proceed with a contract for the 2017 New Concord Street Improvement projects and declaring an emergency.
So moved on the emergency.
So moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. So move by Dixon, second by Stevic on the emergency. Roll call, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Stevic?
Yes.
Kokavich?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
All right. Emergency passes. Now the resolution.
I motion to vote on the resolution.
Second.
All right. Move by Stevic, second by Dixon on the resolution. Roll call, please.
Stevic?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Kokavich?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
Carrigan?
Yes.
All right. Emergency passes. Now the resolution.
I motion to vote on the resolution.
Second.
All right. Move by Stevic, second by Dixon on the resolution. Roll call, please.
Stevic?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Kokavich?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
Carrigan?
Yes.
Stevic?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Now the Resolution 9172 is tabled, as Bill mentioned, and we have one to add to the agenda, and that will be ordinance, let's see, I got the number here, Resolution 9-17-3.
That would be the very last item in your tab.
Is it in?
It's in the new business.
In the new business.
In the new business?
Yeah.
I thought I had it.
Someone can find it.
All right. So Resolution 9-17-3, resolution to authorize village administrator to enter into a contract with GGC Engineers for the formulation and implementation assistance and mapping services for a right-of-way utility use rate determination program and declaring an emergency. Do we have a move on the emergency? Thank you, Robert.
I'll move on the emergency.
Do we have a move? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Move by Lyle, second by Kokavich. Roll call, that'd be on the emergency, yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
Kokavich?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Carrigan?
Yes.
Stevic?
Yes.
Okay, and now a move on the resolution.
I'll move.
Move by Kokavich?
Second.
Second by Lyle. Roll call on the resolution.
Kokavich?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Carrigan?
Yes.
Stevic?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Approval of bills.
I move with the bills.
All right. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
All right. So we have a move by Dixon and a second by Stevic that we pay our bills. All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, we pay our bills. Before we jump into announcements, I did, we just want to clarify on our guest, we recognize Colton Emerson. That was a USA team. Make sure I got that clarified, you know? I keep reading that article as I sit here and read it over again. I saw his shirt and a gold medal out of it, right?
Yeah.
Congrats.
Thank you.
We'll see you back the next time you do those, right?
Yes.
All right. So we'll jump into our announcements. So we have the farmer's market Mondays, 5 to 7. And the next will be October, no, that's not the next one.
Yeah, it's the last one.
That is the last one.
That's the last one.
October night, JG Company will perform at 5:30. So every Monday night, 5 to 7, up until and through October night.
And tonight is special because we do have performing guests there, so anybody can come out and support those. Really definitely appreciated.
Okay. Great. Planning commission meeting Thursday, September 21st, six. Are we still, did you get very many responses?
That may be rescheduled.
Could be changed.
We can do a forum and things like that.
More to come on that. Stay tuned. John Glenn High School Homecoming, Friday, September 22nd. So mark your calendars for that. Parade will be at 5:30 PM. Game is at 7:00. So on the homecoming parade, high school starts out here.
Storage units.
Storage units comes through East Main, turns up College Drive, goes up to the stadium, right? So come out and support the high school for their homecoming and football game at night. Off to a, off to a great season, right? Three and up?
Three and up.
Three and up. The whole Sheridan is one of those wins, right? So that's good. We knocked off I-10 church that stopped nine, so it's helped me, Metta Brook, Cambridge, because we're the minority, so I love John Glenn knocking off the end. So appreciate that. National Road and Zane Gray Museum, Touch a Truck Festival, that will be Saturday, October 7th, 11 to 2, out at the Zane Gray on Route 40 of the museum. That same day, come back into town and you can hear Darryl Strawberry. Will have an event October 7th at the New Concord Pavilion. So that'll be the school grounds where the farmer's market's held. He will give, I assume, a little bit of a history of his life and struggles and how he overcome that.
Right. It's a free event.
Okay. Free event to the public?
Yes.
Who's hosting that?
French and Baptist.
French and Baptist, okay.
Yes.
All right. And then the, come back here in about a month for the excitement at the village council meetings. We'll be here Monday, October 9th at 7:30 right here in Village Hall. So...
I have another event too.
Yes.
I wanted to say that. There's an organization called, it's been around for a couple of years, it's called On the Same Page Muskingham. And the idea is, it's a consortium of a number of partners, including Boy Scouts, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Girl Scouts, and all sorts of other organizations in our area. The idea is to help promote literacy and celebrate local history and bring people together by discussing a common book. And this year, the book is called Beautiful Boy, A Father's Journey Through His Son's Addiction by a Man Named David Schaaf. Several of the events are already over with, but it began in August and it continues until the end of September. There is one free event on Wednesday.[1608.82]